Good evening and welcome to the March 11th, 2013 regular meeting of the Waterloo Community School District Board of Education. I hereby call the meeting to order. And now, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Now, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now Andrea Sparks will read the school district's mission statement.
The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thank you Andrea. And we have a number of students here from East High and West High tonight for some special events, for a couple trips, but also to recognize some award winners as well. And the first item on our agenda is Exhibit A, and this is a presentation from West High students who recently won the Large Group Award at the All-State Festival. They won the Critics' Choice Award. And we're gonna get a presentation from them. And Sharon Miller is here to give us some background information and introduce them.
Well, I'm here just to give a short background because what follows is the really exciting part. And it's such a good coincidence that we have these talented students, both from West High and East High, tonight, as we start celebrating Board of Education Week 2. It helps to call attention to the many fabulous things that our kids do in the district. The West High group tonight was awarded the Critics' Choice at the Iowa High School Speech Association Competition in Ames recently. And I'm going to turn it over to them. I may have to walk out in the hall to queue them to come in.
I think they're getting ready now.
It's about fifteen minutes, and I've heard it's better every time you see it. We're listening over and over.
Welcome to all of you, and thank you for being here.
The following group is choral reading. It is an IHSSA event, which is Iowa High School Speech Association event. How this category is run is that you are given fifteen minutes to present in this category of choral reading. And throughout the state, they run it a variety of different ways, but we choose to do a specific kind of choral reading. The best part about our script is that it was written by a student, Linnea Sumner, and also with music. And Linnea and Trevel wrote the music for the piece as well. And so, what they did is this, a couple weekends ago, on the campus of Iowa State University, they presented this piece and were given the Critics' Choice banner for being number one in the state of Iowa, which is, which is an incredible accomplishment for these individuals. And they've worked extremely hard, and so, we are thankful for this opportunity to be here tonight. And we will begin with Jacalen introductions, and then the piece will begin.
My name is Jacalen Nelson.
My name is Ashton Gruier.
I'm Haley Boilo.
I'm Michaela Wall.
I'm Ben Hirdler.
Zach Tootie.
I'm Trevel Fisher.
I'm Emily Marvett.
I'm Meredith Durban.
I'm Sadie King.
I'm Alexander Hoddle.
I'm DeShawn Rosich.
I'm Jehaznia King.
I'm Ally Duncan.
I am Michaela Fishback.
And this is "Before the Sun Sets."
Clara? Where am I? Hello? Where is she? What happened to her? Clara? Clara?
He's awake!
Who's there?
Selma, go check it out!
Ah! What have you done with her?
Help, help, I'm being assaulted!
Help me!
Whistle! Easy, man, easy!
We're here to help!
Where am I? What's going on?
You've been out for quite a while.
You're in a cave just east of the Darklands.
Dark what? Whoa, he's really out of it.
Be quiet.
Why am I here?
You don't know?
No. Just a moment ago, I was with her, Clara, and then everything went black and I woke up here. Did you kidnap me? Where is she? Clara? Clara!
No!
We were told to find you here.
The great wizard said we were to help you on your quest.
Quest? What quest?
Or maybe he said journey?
I don't know what you're talking about.
Was it expedition?
A voyage?
Excuse me! It's not the wording. I have no knowledge of any adventure. Adventure? How can I miss that one?
Duh!
Wait.
You don't know what you're supposed to do?
No. Care to enlighten me?
We have no idea.
We were just sent to help. You were supposed to know.
Oh darn it all! Clara needs me. I was just with her, and now she's alone.
Clara? You don't mean Princess Clara.
Uh...
She's a this smart!
Got it, got it, got it! Exceptionally beautiful?
Yes, that's her.
Your mission must be to rescue the princess.
What world is this? A world where wizards exist and Clara's a princess?
An awesome one!
So where is she held? How do I reach her?
It is rumored, she is lost at the top of a far mountain, deep into the Darklands, west of here.
So you will take me to her.
The path is dangerous, and the mountains deep, but we will lead you through darkness deep.
That's nice. Did you think of that?
Nah, it was the wizard. Makes sense now that we know what we're doing.
Rhyming was a nice thought.
Guys, wasn't there a second part to that?
Oh yeah! The break of day, the first blades of light, set forth the threat of everlasting night. To save the girl, embark on the quest, but all must be done before the sun sets.
It's just past dawn.
We should set out immediately.
What does it mean, everlasting night?
Don't know, but it sure doesn't sound pleasant.
Onward! Out of cave it poured, onward we must go. Be its armor stored, our courage must not show. The morning mist of dawn collects upon our clothes. As we travel on to the forest deep below, the mountain blooms high in the west. Reach her before the sun sets.
The trees are getting dense.
It'll get darker from here on.
Stay close to us, and don't stray from the path. You don't know what could be lurking in the trees. Things sure have changed since we were last here.
Must be the economy.
What's that?
Never mind.
The canopies have thickened, and darkness has crept from the depths of the forest.
Well, it would make sense for it to get darker as the leaves get thicker.
Yes, but it's more than that.
These woods are cursed. At night, the trees grow, and the leaves intertwine with hissing screams and laughter. It is rumored that the darkness has poisoned the minds of all who have long inhabited here. Even the most kind spirits have become vile and ruthless. But... You shouldn't leave our faces!
Stop getting so worked up, you guys. I can sense danger from miles away. There's nothing here.
I don't like the sound of this cursed thing. Frankly, it frightens me quite a bit. Are you sure this is the right way? It all looks the same. Did you hear me? Folks?
Who dares to enter our land? Be you spies? Thieves? Sailmen?
Please, miss, we're just passing through.
Miss? Mispronounce your majesty again, and I will have your skull as a serving bowl.
No, please be reasonable!
Silence! I will not tolerate this. What do we do? Through trespassings?
We bind them tight, we hush their lies, and block their light out from their eyes. We laugh and jitter to their cries, and slough them down like little flies. Ha, 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 the end is near. Ha, 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 unleash your fear. Ha, 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 the end is near. Ha, 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 unleash your fear.
Are you afraid, old man? You should be.
I do not fear you. Stop this!
She fears. She cries.
I said stop this! We are merely passing through. I can tell your suffering is great, but it is no fault of ours. This curse has taken your mind, but has it taken your heart? I think not. I must reach her before the sun sets. The far mountain, that is where we traveled to. There is a girl there all alone. I left her. I don't know how it happened, but it did. And now she needs me. I can feel it, a physical pull. I ask you now for a true test of strength. Release my friends.
We're his friends!
And let us be on our way. It is dark here, yes, but the leaves are not quite thick enough to obscure all light. Please, for all that is, and once was, let us pass.
Release them. If there is not hope here, then where shall we find it?
Thank you.
You carry us all on your shoulders. May the wind hasten you forth, and the ground guide your feet.
From the depths of woodlands onward the path lines, sides obscured and blocked, eyes hang with leaves and vines. If we could see the sun, it would be raisin' high. We must be there and done before the day is nigh. The mountain blooms high in the west. Reach her before the sun sets.
It feels like we've been walking forever.
Are you sure we're going the right way?
How should I know?
It all looks the same.
We're running circles.
See the light from the trees?
It's almost noon!
Wait, I think I've seen this clearing before. I know a shortcut.
Through there? You're crazy! That takes us through the heart of the Darklands!
Well, do you have a better suggestion?
Yeah, not die. We should keep moving along the perimeter.
Look where that's got us. That path will take days.
And your way will take our lives!
We have to go that way!
Cut it out! Where are we going? We don't have time for this. You said you knew a quicker way. Show me. I can't see anything!
Hold on to each other!
God, it's wet, it's a lot!
Lots we're not! In the job description!
There was no job description!
Ah!
Stand the path! That way it'll suck you down in seconds!
How are we supposed to stand the path when I can't see my hand in front of my face?
Will everyone be quiet? I'm sick of this squabbling!
My leg is cramping!
It smells funny out here.
That's it! I'm doing this alone!
No, don't go!
What have you done?
He'll get lost! He'll die! Let him look for it.
Yeah, we can find him!
Last it all. Clara, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry.
Whoa, 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 why the long face?
Who's there?
Man, this guy just needs to chill out.
Where do you think you're going, little man? Why don't you stay awhile? Leave me alone!
We're just trying to be friendly. Stay away from me!
When we're blue and down in your luck, time has blew and you're in a muck. You cannot do your stories without a cruel shooting, you're stuck. What you doing here, boy? Over your head. What you doing here, boy? Interrupted. What you doing here, boy? Hang by your breath. What you doing here, boy? Over your head.
Over your head!
What you doing here, boy? Over your head.
Over your head!
What you doing here, boy? Interrupted.
Interrupted!
What you doing here, boy? Hang by your breath.
Hang by your breath!
What you doing here, boy? Over your head.
Over your head!
Let's get out of here! I see a light ahead! You're okay! We were so scared!
What? What happened?
You sank, and we carried you out.
You did? You... The sun. Oh no, the sun is gone.
You have to rest.
We're so sorry.
No!
You need to rest.
I can't, let me go!
It's hopeless!
No. No, it's not. There is light to be seen yet. When all seems empty, there is hope in the sky. Look up. Look up for all that matters. The ones you love, your purpose, to go on even when your legs give out. If your heart wavers, look to the sky. There is strength in the sky. The strength you need to power on through struggle, through pain, and impossibility. I look to the sky.
Because it is always there.
I look to the sky.
Because the sun is always rising on some corner of the world.
I look to the sky.
For hope. For strength.
Clara.
Dad? Dad, oh my god, doctor!
Clara.
You're awake! I thought that you had... Could you hear me talking to you? I was reading that story from when I was a kid.
The princess on the mount.
Yes. I was so scared. I had a stroke, and I thought that I-
Clara.
Yes?
What time is it? Is it night?
The sun is setting.
Ah, just in time.
In time? What do you mean?
My princess.
Dad.
I understand now. Before the sun sets. Before my sun... Before my sun is set.
No, doctor!
No, no. It is time.
Dad. No.
You are my everything. You are everything.
When all seems empty...
Look to the sky. Look up. Look up for all that matters. The ones you love, your purpose, to go on even when your legs give out. If your heart wavers, look to the sky. For strength. For purpose. For hope.
Thank you to all of you. That was wonderful. Now, Mr. Penning, could you just tell us a little bit, what's the... What was the process? How long did you work on this?
Normally, we begin auditioning in the end of October, November, for the different categories in large group competition. It's called Large Group Speech or IHSSA. And there are such things like musical theater, ensemble acting, one-act play, radio broadcasting, all of these sort of elements that can be brought to theater and performance in general. Oftentimes, when we say that we're involved in speech, people think it's coming up here and speaking at a podium, but really, it's more of a performance. We... So we began working with this piece. Linnea finished it in... What month do you...
October.
Yeah. October. And then we started the process of kind of thinking what worlds we wanted to create. Trevel and Linnea started working on the music that we wanted to incorporate in our presentation to kind of set the mood that we wanted to establish for the piece. And then we rehearse about twice a week, Mondays and Fridays, for about two hours each. They come in, and we go through the piece in chunks and kind of start to work with it more and work out all the bumps, so...
About how many students do you have total participate in Large Group?
About a hundred. About a hundred right now, so... Actually, today's kind of an exciting day because we just finished our coming to a close on our individual event speech team, and we received eight nominations, which is double what we've received before, so we kind of set a new record for West today, so...
Fantastic. Congratulations.
Thank you.
That was... It was amazing. So to everybody involved, thank you. You did a wonderful, wonderful job. You should all be very proud, and you make us all very proud as well of what you did.
And Linnea and Trevel, your creativity is wonderful. And the people that were... And the rest of you that interpreted what Linnea and Trevel created, just beautiful. Wonderful. Speechless.
Yeah, it was amazing. Thank you all very, very much. Now, do you have any more performances, or is this kind of it?
Actually, we were asked to perform at the Boys Athletic Union this summer for this piece.
Oh, good.
We're kind of tied with the girls and boys athletic union, and I believe that's it. Oh, I think we're gonna be performing at one of West High's pep rallies also. Also, we have a feature performing at Culture Fest, the Foundation, and then our opening day next year, so...
Okay. Well, thank you. Wonderful job. And as they're setting up or actually taking things down, is there anybody in the audience that would like to... Or, excuse me. Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead on the agenda here. It's School Board Recognition Week. So Sharon Miller is here, and that's Exhibit B.
And that's a hard act to follow, so I'll just say that this is one of the examples of the work that you do coming to fruition in the lives of young people. And this Board Recognition Week is our opportunity to say thanks to you in very small ways. We hope that this gives you some taste of the fine work that's being done by our students and our staff. Tomorrow, you'll get a different kind of taste, if you'll forgive the pun. Dr. Norris's talent for puns has rubbed off on us. So you will have a luncheon in your honor at East High School, catered by the East High Culinary Arts Program in the academy at East. We have some representatives of that academy here tonight, and they're gonna talk to you a little later on. I think they have an exhibit about a trip that they're going to take, but I believe there's also an award that you might be interested in hearing about. So when they come to talk to you about their trip, they'll tell you more about that, too. We just, again, want to thank you in every way that we can. It's a small token to have a week that gives us an opportunity to call attention to what you do, and we think that the work your students have demonstrated tonight is a wonderful exemplar of bright futures that boards contribute to building. So thank you again. And tomorrow, the lunch at East High School.
Yes, and we very much look forward to the lunch tomorrow to the students from East. We appreciate you being here now as well. But Sharon, at this time, I'd like to recognize you. You spent a number of years as board secretary, and I think when a number of us joined the board, you were in that role and just went above and beyond and helped us all acclimate and helped everything run so smoothly, and set everything up very, very well to kind of hand the reins over to Pam Arndorf, who's carried that tradition on, but we all owe you a great deal of thanks for all you've done for this whole board, so...
Thank you.
And Sharon, hopefully tomorrow's taste won't make waste, so... We had to get one more in, one more. That's a warning. All right. Now, at this time, we've come to the time when we will hear from any individuals that would like to speak on any topic, can address the board. And there's a procedure we'll go through. I'll read the card if there's anybody here that would have liked to address the board. Is there? Okay, seeing no one, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, and that's a consent agenda, and we'll... In this, we'll hear from the students from East and West. But tonight, the consent agenda includes five items. They are the minutes, first, the minutes of our last regular board meeting on February 25th. Then, second, personnel appointments and adjustments over the last two weeks. Third is bills due and payable between board meetings. And then, fourth, is the West High School National Leadership Conference in Orlando, Florida, from the Business Professional Association. And then finally, number five is from the East High Culinary Arts Class, the trip to Baltimore after winning the state finals in the Pro Start National Invitational Award. This is for the trip to nationals. So at this time, are there any items board members wish to remove from the agenda?
Exhibit G.
G, okay, yeah.
And F.
And F. And that's F and G, and that's West and East, so we'll get through our...
Also, D, please.
D, okay. Well, unfortunately, I'm gonna remove E, so that leaves our consent agenda only consisting of the minutes. So I don't think we need to remove that. We can just... If we need to discuss it, we will. So I'll ask for the motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the minutes of our last meeting.
So moved.
Thank you, in a second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll ask for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, nay. The chair votes aye, motion carried. Then we come to Exhibit B. This is personnel appointments and adjustments over the last two weeks. It's on pages six, seven, and eight of our board packet, and the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the personnel items as listed.
So moved.
Thank you, in a second.
Second.
And discussion.
I was just wondering about, I see the... We have coaching positions that have been filled. I was just wondering how the rest of our varsity staff at the high schools are coming together.
I cannot tell you, but I will check with the district AD and get that information back to you. I don't... I can't tell if they- I don't, I can't tell if they can post it or not. I don't recall, but I will get that information to you.
Thank you.
Uh, we're looking at head volleyball at East. Is there another position that you're looking at for?
I'm not sure of any others that are open at this time.
There's a swimming position that's, it's a.
At West.
At West.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or discussion?
I, I.
I just wanted to clarify, Mike, that I had a couple calls on if Tara Thomas's position was a new position. And just to clarify that, Sharon Miller is retiring, and it is taking over her position that isn't a new position. So I thought that that would be a good clarification for the public, that, that wasn't a new hire, that it was just a replacement, a sad replacement of Sharon, so.
Thank you, Sue. That's, no, very good. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The chair votes aye, motion carried. We next come to Exhibit E. It's on page nine through seventeen of our Board Packet. This is the bills due and payable between Board meetings. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the bills due and payable and the bills paid between Board meetings. Get that motion on the floor.
So moved.
Thank you, in a second.
Second.
All right, and before we start discussion, as an attorney, I represent a client who's paid by one of the bills, so I'll abstain from voting on this matter. Any further discussion?
I just have something I have to ask out of curiosity, and it's on page eleven. And it's down about halfway, and it's just a bill. It's not very much, twelve dollars, but.
Crack-up farm.
Crack-up farm. I have to know what that is. Sounds like maybe egg farm?
This is not.
I will see if I can find it.
Just, I, that was the, when I opened this packet up and I looked at the bills, my eye went fat right away, so. Just curiosity, so.
Good question. My money's on eggs. It's gotta be. I don't know.
Might be a joke book.
Oh, it might be a joke book.
Dr. Norris.
Oh, boy.
Who said that?
It's probably a joke book.
I'm like Rodney Dangerfield. I get nervous.
All right, we will, uh, any further questions or discussion? All right, then we will vote on the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Chair abstains. Motion carried. That brings us to the students from West High. And this is Exhibit F on page eighteen of our, our Packet. And this is for a group of West High students, Devon Winters, to attend the BPA National Leadership Conference in Orlando, Florida. BPA, I believe, is Business Professional Association?
Business Professionals of, yeah.
Okay.
First of all, I would thank you for being here tonight and letting us present these two trips that these students are going on. One of the things that we've really tried to do in the last couple of years is to ratchet up the student organizations at both East and West. We know from research that students who are involved are more likely to stay engaged in their learning, not only in the classroom, but outside, and it really is a pull for them. We're very, very happy tonight to have two of those groups with us. Devon Winters is here from West, and she'll talk about the trip and her students, who are going to Business Professionals of America.
Hi, Devon Winters. Sarah Lewanduski also runs BPA with me this year. We had a Large Group Fall Leadership. We took about twenty, twenty-one kids with us. Spring Leadership, it's a three-day trip, which ended up being a little bit more because of the snowstorm. We had fifteen with us. So, but our, out of our fifteen, actually, I brought quite a few of the ones that are heading to Nationals. We had nine qualify for Nationals, so that's pretty good odds there. But I'd like them to talk to you a little bit about BPA instead of me. It's always better coming from them, so.
Hi, I'm Gordana.
Ariane.
I'm Brian Schultz.
Janaya Lasaric.
Ben Buller.
Free Winters.
I'm Olly Lewanduski.
Great.
You guys can come back down. Let's keep the fun.
Okay. Welcome to all of you. Thank you for being here.
I'm still aware to go all the time, aren't you, so?
I'm Gordana. We are from BPA. That's Business Professionals of America. What we do is we go to conference and competitions. Some of the things we do at conferences are we learn more about careers and what, what they do and more aspects of it. We also learn things like dinner etiquette and how to dress properly for a job or a job interview. So we learn a lot of things that we need to know in the future. Also, we go to competitions, some things that, some competitions that we go to. Our interview, computer skills, speech, and also team events where we compete together. So, yeah. I think this is really beneficial for us, just because we learn a lot. I don't learn this really in the classroom, and I know I want to go in a business field when I grow up, so I think this is really beneficial for me, and it has great opportunities to learn things about the business world. So thank you.
Quick question. Do the boys or girls have better etiquette when you?
Um, I don't know. What do you guys think? Some say boys, but I think girls.
Gordana, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ariane Alugich, us being part of BPA has brought many new experiences to our lives. It has allowed us to further enhance our skills and develop new ones to prepare us for our careers in the future. As members of BPA, we have the opportunity to come together and volunteer at events such as Special Olympics and simply recycling at our school. As members of BPA, we have opportunities to take new opportunities that we've never had before. I personally had the opportunity to run a political campaign at our last state conference. I stand before you, representing West High, as a president of state BPA.
Cool.
Very good.
We greatly appreciate the chance to go to Nationals and further represent our schools and gain the recognition we have earned. Whether competing in the competition successfully or attaining torch award points, which is something we do by community service and further developing our skills, we have qualified for Nationals. We all worked very hard to earn this and would appreciate the chance to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you all. And congratulations. So all nine of you have qualified?
Mm-hmm.
For the Nationals. Congratulations to each of you, so, yeah. Thank you very much.
Mike, could I hop in just one sec? I would like you to look at page twenty-one to, at their, their schedule. In all my history of doing this, I've never seen a schedule like that.
I, no, it went later.
This is what I call the Dr. Norris schedule, because when you go, you go. There, it is from eight AM or seven until PM, so.
I noticed that, because I saw curfew was midnight, and I thought there must be a big gap between when you're done with dinner and curfew, but then I noticed it was.
Ariane, we believe is also going to be running for a national office.
Oh, fantastic.
It's a new thing, and I've never run a national office candidate before, so this is a pretty big deal.
Oh, great.
So that's why there's a lot of things that he has to go to with his campaign manager and things like that.
Okay.
It is a very big schedule. We're tight with everything, so. That's why, you know, it is important that we have two advisors there, so one can make sure groups of kids and check the other group and all that, to make sure everybody's doing what they should be and where they're at. But this is the best group of BPA kids I think I've ever had. They're a wonderful group of kids to work with, and they're on task and great.
And Florida's a horrible place. No.
Who's your campaign manager?
Shari Bakavat. Did I say it right?
That's enough.
But he wasn't able to be here tonight, so, and we're still clarifying who can all go, because it is a financial burden for the students. So we're getting donations from the community and we're getting some support from the school, so we're working on some different avenues there, so.
Are you all seniors?
Actually, we have sophomores. We only have one senior here. All the rest are, oh, two seniors, sorry. Juniors, sophomores, so we kind of got the gamut. We do have a freshman, but she wasn't able to come to the spring competition with us, too. So it's for all age levels and all academies, actually, so.
Oh, great.
That's wonderful.
You are a very impressive group of young people. We wish you all the best, and thank you. And keep us posted on how we can help with fundraising.
Yeah, could you talk a little bit about the, how you could send donations in, or where it would send to, or that type of thing?
They can just come to West High, and care of me. That would be wonderful, if you know businesses that are willing. All these students have gone out to local businesses, and they're actually hitting them. We have donation letters that they can give out, that the students signs themselves, and it's got everybody on it, so they know who's involved and all that. So we really do try, and we try not to hit the same businesses, so we let each other know. I hit whatever company, so we kind of send that out, so nobody is double hitting a company, so. We also did a fundraiser. We got Walgreens, so if you want T-shirts that say.
Keep calm and make money.
Yeah, keep calm and make money. You know, we are a business group, so we want to make money. So, but they are available at Walgreens. We sold them to the school. We also sold them at Cedar Falls High School, with Cedar Falls on the bottom of them. And we got Walgreens in Cedar Falls to buy some, Walgreens in Waterloo to buy them also. So they actually, so please patronize Walgreens, because they've done a lot for us.
Oh, great.
So they bought ninety-six shirts from us. And we got all our profit from it. They didn't take anything from it.
Oh, so they don't take any profit? Oh, that's wonderful.
They did not take any profit. We thought they were going to sell them for like two dollars more, but they decided not to, and they just, yep, so they were a very big supporter of us, so.
Okay, well.
Great. Thank you. Well, Mrs. Winters, thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Lewanduski.
But also to all the students, thank you all for taking the initiative and doing this. Arjan, best of luck to you at Nationals as well, but to all of you, enjoy the trip. Any further questions or discussion? Okay, we'll, we'll get the motion on the floor then. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve travel for West High students to Orlando, Florida from May seventh through May twelfth, two thousand thirteen, for the National Leadership Conference.
Moves to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All of, any opposed, say nay. All right, the chair votes aye, motion carried. Thank you all.
And Mr. Schmidt has won five or six school board-run successful campaigns. He's been on the school board twenty years, and so you might want to pick his brain on running.
Yes, and is also in the business world, and, yeah.
Do you have any, any campaign signs?
Well, congratulations again, and thank you all. The next item on our agenda is another great thing, and this is for students from East High to travel to Baltimore. This is Exhibit G on page twenty-two of our Board Packet. And I'll get the motion on the floor, and then we'll get a little bit of information as Sherry Cedarland comes up. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve travel for East High students to Baltimore, Maryland for the Pro Start National Invitational for Culinary Arts from April eighteenth to April twenty-second, two thousand thirteen.
So moved.
Thank you, in a second. Thank you. And Mary Meyer and Sherry Cedarland are here to.
I'd like to introduce Sherry Cedarland. Before we let her and the students talk, our culinary program is basically in its second and half year of operation. We opened up our formal career academies three years ago, and the culinary rooms were really not ready until second semester. We entered Pro Start competition last year. We stood, West did not have a team last year. And we placed third in the state. And the Pro Start curriculum is a national restaurant curriculum. It's a big deal. When the students take it for two years, pass tests, they both graduate with a certificate that basically lets them into just about any culinary school in the country with at least one year's experience underneath their belt. Our culinary students also get their safety certification through Serve Safe. So our students in culinary are really well on their way. If they would like to be a chef, or it's somehow in restaurant management, or any kind of, all aspects of that industry, they really are ready for it. We are extremely proud. Last year, our first year in competition, East High took home third place. This year, with work of two very good dedicated teachers and a lot of dedicated kids, and a mentor from our community, Blake Landau, West took second in the state competition, and East took first place.
So we took a team of four.
You can bring, oh, there we go. Yes.
This is Ricardo. He's a sophomore. Isaac is a senior, and Michaela is a junior. Our fourth member is on the track team, and he's at the Unidome right now, and he's a sophomore. So about January, well, before Christmas, I asked, started asking the classes who was interested. And about Jan, early January, we decided on these four as dedicated students who were great attenders and engaged in culinary arts, okay? Some said they were kind of interested, but they weren't quite as engaged as I thought was necessary. So we started working, and then we got Blake Landau to start working with us. And Blake kind of split his time between West and East, and it was never a conflict of interest as far as we were concerned. And I think the Thursday night before we went, I was thinking, oh my gosh, I just hope we don't end up last. And they're all going, it'll be okay, because from the beginning, this team said they were going to win.
Oh, great.
And, but, you know, I'm a leader that doesn't know culinary. You know, I've been a fax teacher a long time, but culinary arts is a whole new ballgame. But with Blake's help and their dedication, we pulled it off. First place. In fact, we were out at the mall when the director, May Shabon, called, and she goes, Sherry, where are you? Did you leave? And I'm like, no, we just went to the mall for a couple hours to relax after, you know, because we'd been in competition all morning. Okay, and how about West? Did they leave? No, they're here, too. So we thought maybe something was up, and it was. So they all have medals, and we're very proud of what they have accomplished. Do you want to do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, basically, all we're giving, given is a one-hour slot to cook three, a three-course meal. Basically, a salad, an entree, and a dessert. I was responsible for the salad. It was a delicious salad.
Of course.
Best part of the meal, right?
It was a beef salad. Thanks to a little bit of guidance from Blake Landau, I was able to perfect my technique and quantity in how I served it. Ricardo and Michaela were in charge of entree. Ricardo served a filet. Oh.
Beef filet.
Beef filet.
Beef filet. And.
Do you want me to name the men?
Yes, please.
Beef filet with, and bone with marrow. Then we had a morrel and leek gravy. Sauce, sauce, excuse me. We're culinary. We say sauce. And what?
And then the entree was accompanied by potato bacon sarlades, which is basically where you have diced the potatoes, then you cook it in bacon fat. It ends up with a nice crisp outside and a tender inside. Served on the side, and then we also accompan.
Yeah. Sounds very good.
Sorry, Blue Zone.
And then we also accompanied it with sauteed asparagus. And then Hunter was our.
Pastry chef.
Was our pastry chef, and he basically did a pumpkin mousse. He was able to balance all the spices necessary for the pumpkin mousse beautifully. It turned out amazing. His display was also beautiful, so. Thanks to our cooperation, we were able to, be able to complete this meal in an hour and get first place.
Right. Now, will this be the same format that you have at Nationals?
Yes, sir.
Will it be one hour? Okay. And will you know what you'll be doing? What, what food you'll have to prepare, or?
We provide our own food, so. We should be able to.
Okay.
Control that.
So you, you come up with your own menu?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, but you, you, when I, I keep reading this, you only have, you don't have electricity or water. You have to do it on a two-butane burner stove.
Yes, we do. It was the challenging thing. There were multiple times where we would look at a recipe and want to make it, but then we'd realize we need an oven, or we need something special for it. And then for the pastry, which was honestly a challenge. Thanks to Hunter, he was actually able to whisk up egg whites and make whipped cream out of heavy whipping cream. And honestly, I think his arm was exhausted by the end of that, by the end of the day.
But tomorrow, when we do it for you, we're going to let him use the electric mixer.
And water.
How many times did you practice making?
The exact number, I don't really know, but as much as we could.
Did you have to eat it all every ti, every time?
There was one point when they said, no more beef right now. No more beef tenderloin, so.
Are you going to do the same menu at Nationals?
Yes, we are. Yes, we are.
Well, great.
It seems like from February twenty-fifth to April nineteenth is a lot of time, but it's barely any time. And with, we haven't even practiced once yet, have we, since we left? Because of, you know, we've had snow days, we've had, they have to get back to their regular class schedule because they've missed a few needing to be in the classroom. We, we spent a lot of, we spent, what, two snow days together? And two or three or four Saturdays, I forget. And the last weekend, they were there from, I think, three to eight on Saturday night and then Sunday. And, and they have to pack everything. And they get graded from the minute we get there. They check our coolers and they graded us on whether we knew how to pack coolers or not. And how organized they were, how they set up. We got rave reviews on how clean they were and how well they cooperated. We put a lot of points that way and how professional they looked. So it was a great experience.
So how are you, how are you coming on your fundraiser? I know it's
Yeah.
quite a bit of money and it's a fairly short time from the time you knew you were, you're going to represent the state.
It's a very short time. You know, had we even considered this a possibility, we might have put it in the board, you know, as the packet before we even went to state. But, so what we're doing for fundraising is, of course, the cookie sales and the brownie sales and the tort sales, which that doesn't earn very much quickly.
No.
So we've put together a letter, a trifold letter that describes the team, and that will go out into the community this, towards the end of this week. We've put together a two-hour event that we're host, that Landmark Commons is going to host for us. The kids are going to actually demonstrate on the tables with their burners while people are milling around. There'll be appetizers and desserts, and there, there's a price to get in, a ticket to get in. So we'll get part of that. And then also people are donating things for us to auction off, and the kids will be making things like pumpkin mousse to auction off, right, and things like that. And then another person is going to have a dinner party where the kids actually cook. And we'll charge a set amount for a place at that table. So those are our basic fundraisers that we've been trying to get put together.
So if people did want to donate, who, how would they do that? Would they be able to go through the school to get a tax deductible?
Absolutely, yes. Actually, if they would just call the school, we could mail out the flyer to them. Or we could email it, or they could just send the check and we'll send them a receipt. So the check would go to Waterloo Community School District and East High Culinary kind of at the bottom, and we have a special account once we get our approval tonight to go to Baltimore. And it's very exciting because none of these kids have been too far from home, right? And so it is at a beautiful place in Baltimore on the Inner Harbor, and that's where the competition takes place. And so will be a worldly experience.
And, and, and what you're raising money for is the transportation there and then the hotel?
The transportation, the hotel. We have to take everything with us. We have to take every pot and pan. We're going to have to be a little better at packing than we were when we went to state because everybody had their own box, you know, and filled the back of the van. So, yeah, we have to take everything and it, it isn't, we don't have to pay a registration, which is wonderful. But that is just because they earned the right to go, that the Restaurant Association kind of takes care of that.
So once you're there, do you have to buy, you buy the food there that you're going to prepare, or do you bring that?
Well, we're definitely taking our own beef because, you know, there's no beef like Iowa beef. So we will get some, our beef. And then it just depends on when we fly, how much time we have, whether somebody's driving everything or whether we're shipping.
Okay.
Because really, the back of the van was pretty full of our boxes of, because they each have their own things that they need, and you have to take everything. And if you don't have it, you'll just figure out how to make it without it. So the only thing we don't have to take are the burners.
Okay.
Will you keep this team together for next year since you only have one senior?
Oh, I think they absolutely will want to be together, except Isaac's going to leave us, you know, but the other.
Where are you going, Isaac?
Well, I am headed off to Iowa State.
Oh, you're going to major in, in culinary or?
I plan on majoring, I plan on majoring in engineering with something to do with food.
Okay.
Oh, great.
Great.
You can build restaurants.
And what about the other two of you? What is your favorite part of the culinary arts program?
To me, it's just the experience.
Would you go to the mic?
Um, well, to me, it's just the experience of having all of this, you know, um, it's just the experience, I guess.
Cool.
Yeah, I like to cook. I'm actually a cook at Hardee's. I have a part-time job there, so, yeah.
Do you like the challenge of having to do this in an hour? Is that what kind of appeals to you?
Yeah, it's kind of hard not having electrical stuff, so.
Have to be creative.
Yeah, you got to be creative, so. It's pretty hard, but we get through it.
We weren't allowed to coach. You can't, you can't coach. Well, you're not supposed to coach. So they're up there and they've done their poultry. They, first they do cuts, so they have, they have four knife cuts that we chose. And they had to also know how to fabricate a chicken, which basically means that you cut it up, right, into eight pieces. So the four of them are there. We have two that are expert at chicken. No, they didn't pick those two to do the chicken, right? They picked the, they picked you two to do the chicken. And the other two had to do the knife cuts. So when they were done, we hadn't really talked about how to move, and we hadn't been to state, so we hadn't watched how, how it really works. So we're, Blake and I are standing there going, they need to wash their hands. Okay, so I walk over to the hand washing station, I wash my hands. I go back, then Blake walks over, he washes. They're looking at me. They're like, oh my gosh, you guys, we already decided we were doing that, you know? But we could coach, so. We did, but we didn't. So it was a great experience. Well, we'll be a little more subtle and a little more trusting when we go to Baltimore, won't we?
You'll be more experienced, so.
More experienced. Oh, Michaela, here. Yeah. They put it on a seatbelt the night we want. So what, what is the question?
Oh, your favorite part about culinary arts?
I just like learning everything from the culinary perspective because there's like, if I, I learn how to cook from my mom, but of course she doesn't know like culinary things. So actually learning from someone who has experience in the culinary field is different, and that's what I'm interested in. So I like that.
Well, congratulations to the three of you and to your fourth teammate as well. You also, all the students from East and West, you all make us very proud and you've represented our school district very well, so we, we thank all three of you. And Mrs. Sederland, thank you for taking the initiative to get these kids prepared and get them down there. And we thank Blake Landau too, that he has done a lot. I know I was at East High a few weeks ago and he was there in your class. I think he's been there just an awful lot.
Yep, the day you stopped by.
Yeah, so, no, we, we appreciate what, what he's doing as well, but, but thank you also. And have a wonderful time out in Baltimore and enjoy the trip. Best of luck.
You can, you, you can be serious about what you do out there, but have fun too.
Enjoy it.
Because this is what it's all about. Learning is fun.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you all. All right, any further discussion or questions?
I have a question maybe to Mike or Coughlin. When our students, Michael Coughlin, when our students take these trips and they're representing our school district and they do all of this fundraising, do we have any way that we can help accommodate some of these things?
Matching grants?
I'm sure we can come up with some ideas.
Okay, we need to think about that.
Yeah, I was going to stress that too, because you know, extrac, as you've seen tonight, extracurricular is an integral part of our total program. And when they're successful, you know, it's no different than athletic teams, you know, if they go to state, we, but I assume we pay the hotel and everything down there.
There's some districts that, that actually, when, once these vocational competitions get started, they treat it like an extracurricular, like if an athletic team got state or Nationals, whatever. What we've got to be very careful of the slippery slope of just any group of students that are going to take a trip anywhere, it's a little different than winning and being, and going to state or whatever. So we'll, we'll, we'll work on that.
So we may need a policy, you know, some sort of guidance or at least that people can look forward to and know how much they're going to, and fundraising on your, I mean, that's, that's an experience in itself and it's not invaluable, you know? So we don't want to completely eliminate that, but if there is a revolving fund or, or something that, especially when the timing is like it is here, you know, that you could, you know, take a loan from that and otherwise contribute to it. So I don't know, something on that order, I think would be appropriate as a number of, of, as a success. You know, it's a good problem to have in the sense that
It is, yeah.
It's the success that's driving it.
The teachers, we're searching for ways to support you, yeah.
But it is, it, to me, it's, it's an integral part of the high school experience and we need to maybe consider that.
Yeah, because we, we want to support you and we're very, very proud of, of what you're doing. So thank you all. Thank you guys. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Chair votes, I motion carried. Thank you all again, and congratulations to each of you.
Congratulations.
And this next part about tax revenue bonds is really exciting.
You can sleep.
And, and best of luck and safe travels. Thank you again.
I think, I think the engineer needs to stay for this.
And as, as Dr. Norris said, the next item on our agenda is regarding tax revenue bonds. This is Exhibit H. It starts on page twenty-nine of our board packet. And this is for the issuance of school infrastructure sales and service tax revenue bonds. We'll get the motion on the floor. It's to approve a resolution, and then we'll hear some information from Michael Coughlin about this. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve this, approve the above resolution to authorize the sale and issuance of ten million dollar school infrastructure sales services and use tax revenue in refunding bond anticipation notes, series twenty thirteen, on March twenty-fifth, two thousand thirteen, with electronic bidding procedures and the district official statement. And can we get that motion on the floor?
Uh, some of.
Thank you, a second. And just before I finish that, the actual resolution we'll read, that the resolution fixing the date of sale of ten million dollar school infrastructure sales services and use tax revenue bond series twenty thirteen, approving electronic bidding procedures and approving the official statement. So that's what we're approving by this motion. Mr. Coughlin, if you could give us some background information on this item, please.
Would you like to talk about where the project?
Sure, that's okay. We took some suggestions to the facilities committee about three months ago, and that was that, that we consider using a portion of the remaining space, if you will, remaining revenue that we have coming in from the one penny sales tax and complete some projects that we think had some pretty significant priority. And I won't list all of the projects, but there's, there are some air conditioning projects, there's some demo of some of our old buildings. There are some CTE, Career Tech Ed, projects, at least one playground and fencing project. Again, some of the old school demolition projects, some fencing under the heading of safety. And we're also looking at, looking for a different location eventually for our bus garage and so that we can save some money in fuel costs driving clear out south of town. And then we, we know that there's going to be some contingencies, but we, we went to the facilities committee and said, look, these are some things. I, also I left out, there was a project at Hoover for some parking trafficking, parking traffic fencing and even their cafeteria project that we've been looking at for at least four years. And so I think I've got the essence of the projects, but anyway, we asked the facilities committee if they would support us in moving forward. And frankly, the only way to do that is under the one cent sales tax. We don't have enough money remaining in PEPAL. That's going for maintenance and other projects in the district. And so we think these are appropriate and we'd urge the board to allow us to, to use, I think we have approximately twenty million dollars of bonding capacity left under the one penny sales tax. Is that close, Mike?
Yes, at this time.
And so we wanted to save some in, for unexpected things that come up over the next few years, but we felt very safe in recommending the half of that, the ten million. So, Michael, what didn't I cover?
As far as the projects and where this is coming from, we've discussed that in facility and finance committee. And it really is, in one sense, the, the demo of the buildings, the completion of building the new buildings. So we have some buildings that are still there that need to be demoed and that will complete that project. But then also the fencing was in several areas, and I won't repeat all of that again. But looking at that, to try to do that under our current cash flow with the silo, one cent tax, it was going to take quite a while to get up to that point of being able to do that. And obviously, the safety issues that we have in the district and the national attention to that, it just felt like it was a good time to invest in that, complete the sites and kind of finish our obligation to the buildings to keep the kids safe. So we did approach Piper Jaffray and they put together a couple proposals, and that's where Dr. Norris said, we said we do have a, a little excess of twenty million that we could have borrowed, but we decided to go with half of that at this time. That equity will build up as time goes on through twenty twenty-nine. So we will build up some equity in that fund as the collections are made from year to year. As we were talking, in the discussions, we are well within our bonding capacity. We have over two hundred million available. And this would bring us, if we have to count the sales tax revenue bonds as part of that, there's really not clear recommendation on that, that that even has to go against that, that this would be just the property tax bonds, the, the government, the GO bonds, as they're called. So even if we have to apply all of what we have through sales tax, we're still looking at a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty million dollars worth of equity in being able to, to put out bonds. So we have a lot, we have a, a lot of room to grow in that as well. What you have before you tonight is the start of this process from the board's standpoint, as far as issuing the bonds. Piper Jaffray puts together what's called the Preliminary Official Statement. It will become the official statement once you approve it. It really is very saturated with information about the Waterloo district. If you look through that and can, I'm thinking, if I can memorize all of this, I'll be great for the legislative day at the Capitol. There really is a lot. There really is a lot of, uh, information in here, it's a five-year period, um, but we have been moving pretty fast on this, um, I just got the final copy today, I have seen a draft, um, but I would like, um, I'll, I'll be looking through it in detail even after tonight, and there may be some tweaks here and there with, with questions. But they do a lot of these and, and, uh, pretty much standard on their operation. So you will be, the, the motion is authorizing the sale of the ten million. It is setting the date for March twenty-fifth, so for the next board meeting, you will be approving the bids and actually approving who the bonds will be sold to. Uh, Tim Oswald, who you have had here before, will be here that day to, um, conduct the sale, make sure everything's done in according to specs and so on. In the document that you have in your board packet, that's the whole resolution, so, um, Pam will have a fun time typing all of that in, um, to the minutes, they have to be in the official minutes, um, and the official statement then will then accompany that, and then there's also, uh, an addendum in the back that talks about all of the, uh, pro- procedures for the electronic bidding. Uh, you know, so when you think about how things are sold on eBay now, you can see how fast things will probably happen, and how they present bids and how they communicate. Uh, so that's why we have Tim Oswald here to conduct all of that and make sure we're meeting all of the, the specifications. I did have a couple of questions today, as, uh, you were reviewing. Let me make sure I keep one of these, if you wanna pass that down. I had a couple of questions, one of them was, have you pre- have you prepared, uh, expenditure, uh, statement for cash flow? How does that work? Are we still going to, uh, be able to do everything that we want to do? Uh, the other thing was, uh, a question based on fees, what kind of fees are we paying for this? Uh, and I'll address this as you get your copies of what is coming around there. The front page is a list of the projects, I don't have everything on there, I've, I have, uh, condensed it to Orange Elementary and the Hoover Music recent project, and then the next two, two summers, as we kinda broke that out in, um, the wish list of, of, uh, projects. Uh, we're not getting real specific on those because none of those have been officially approved yet, and we would have to take bids and all of that, so there's much more detail to, uh, to go through.
Which is gonna give you individual approval on each project as it goes through.
Yeah, yeah, you, you aren't approving all of those projects tonight, you're just approving the issuance of the funding to be able to do, uh, the recommended list, and then they will all be approved individually. So the front page is just showing, uh, the right-hand column is a total of, of what's happening, the yellow column is adding what's going out in expenditures. If we just kinda spread those projects evenly across the next year and a half. So then what I did with that, uh, skip one page and go to, uh, that says cash flow with no growth. This still is an aggressive way to, uh, finance this. To do everything we want to do as fast as what we want to do is still going to need a little help from the general fund for cash flow, but it's certainly going to relieve the, the amount that we have been doing in the last couple of years. And, um, in fourteen fifteen, it does get up around five million, or a little over five million dollars. But that, again, what I wanted to stress is, this is a projection with no growth, and there has been growth every year since we've started, even in, even in the years that we, the economy was depressed, there was growth from year to year. So the second page, or the last page of that with the green, is an adjustment showing the, uh, a, a modest amount of growth that Piper Jaffray uses to project out of giving more revenue from the sales tax. So, um, that gets it a little more manageable, but it does, uh, still challenge our cash flow, uh, for a couple of years while we get that done. Now, the part of that that is, uh, still under discretion is how fast we do the projects. So as we plan those, as we promote them, it will be based on, um, how fast, um, the money would go out. The other thing that we really don't know as well is the Orange Project is a major, uh, funding expenditure, uh, and that's showing that going out pretty aggressive as well. So if that backs off a little bit, that will help the cash flow. So we're back to es- estimating and budgeting, um, but where we're at with what we have proposed, we feel comfortable that we can, uh, manage the funds to be able to do what we want and, uh, keep the cash flow healthy. Um, it will just depend on how fast, uh, projects are done and completed, so we'll, um, keep that in mind as we, as we go through. On the second page that I skipped, I wanted to get to the other question of what does it cost in fees? And if you look at the bottom of that, this is a, this is a debt schedule, and the bonds dated, uh, in the middle there, a bond dated six-one, two thousand thirteen, which is, uh, a little bit late, they will probably be in April. That's showing the principal and interest paid over, uh, a ten-year period, um, and then at the bottom of that shows the issuance cost, I mean, we have, let me go back up, the little, the little box right below the big schedule has what we will get in, in, uh, proceeds, about my, nine million thirty-five thousand out of the ten. We will have to set aside eight hundred and forty-six thousand, doesn't mean we lose it or pay it out, it just means we have to put that aside in case sales tax doesn't, doesn't come in as fast as what we expect, so that's really a buffer that, that, uh, the law requires that we put aside so we're not short. Um, but we, we can't use that until the, until the, uh, time of the payback is over. So then the cost of issuance, um, is really all of the, uh, paperwork that goes along with it, uh, and the, and the breakdown right below that in the box shows what that is, Bond Counsel, Financial Advisor, um, Printing, Rating, uh, and so on. So when we were, one of the questions we had was what does it cost for Piper to come in here and do that? It's about twenty thousand dollars for this, so it really is only about, uh, point two percent, so it's, uh, uh, or two percent, so it's, it's really a, a modest fee for what we're doing. And then we have Bond Counsel, which is Ailer's Law Firm, and these are all estimates, so they will be tweaked a little bit once everything is finally said and done. So I think that addresses the questions that I had about it. Um, this really gives us an opportunity to finish some things and to address some things that, uh, are necessary and have come up as public concerns in the last uh, few months, so, um, we feel good about being able to do this, uh, plus also leave, um, leave some wiggle room, if you wanna call that as a technical accounting term, uh, for anything unexpected, and as we go forward, our equity will just grow. So even at a no-growth, um, model, by twenty twenty-nine, we're still building up over forty million dollars in this account. If we do nothing else from this time on, which is probably not the case, but there's a lot of equity to still be built up in there, and then if there's a growth model to it, it would even be more than that, but that's, it's kinda like budgeting, when you think one year out, you can come pretty close, two years and three years is, uh, a little foggy, and after that is a really a leap of faith, so I'm not gonna try and guess where we're gonna be at in twenty twenty-nine, but, uh, that account will gain equity as we go along.
Michael, you're using the word ec- equity synonymous with, uh, cash balance in that bond fund, correct?
Correct. Yeah, it will build up a cash balance in that fund after all the payments are made, all the projects are done, um, we will still get the sales tax. That will be coming in through twenty twenty-nine to this point.
So where is the, where is the reserve held?
It is held in Bankers Trust, it's one of the, um, Bankers Trust is a, a Des Moines bank that, actually, I think, uh, several bonding companies use as a reserve, they're, in, in my experience of doing this for thirty years, they have always been named as the one that do all the municipality holdings, and, for instance, like the QSCB where we have to put money in, and then we get a federal reimbursement for the tax back. Bankers Trust handles all that for us, we don't have to fill out all the paperwork every time.
So is it an interest-bearing account?
Yes, it is. All of that is calculated into here as an estimate.
Mm-hmm.
Right, so what is the, have they provided any guidance on what they expect the interest rates to be?
Well, one of the things that you see on the front of your, of your official statement is interest, or standard and poor's rating.
Yeah.
We don't have that yet, so that will be a big, that will be a big, um, point of what interest rates we get.
It's about as favorable now, I think, as, um, people have seen for quite some time.
But tonight, this motion, is it to, is this to go out and get the bids?
Yes. You are approving the issue to go out and, and submit bids, solicit bids.
But we're not required to accept?
Not if you don't like the bid.
Any bid.
Correct. Next board meeting on the twenty-fifth, uh, Tim Oswald will be here, and he will review all of the bids and interest rates and all of that. That's when you make a decision of whether you're going forward with it. So this is just say, start the process, get everything ready for us, and we can decide at the next board meeting.
How many bids do you accept? How many bids do you expect to get?
I was looking through our last one, and, um, if I remember right, it was about six to eight.
But if we, I mean, if we do deny the bids, we still, the fifty-two thousand is, is gone.
I would believe so, most of it, if not all of it, cause they wouldn't have to follow through with everything, so I'm guessing it's just a portion.
For the most, but that's what we're betting on tonight, is that.
What, what kind of institutions bid? I mean, do we get a variety?
Actually, a lot of banks bid, um. One of the things that we went through a year ago was Piper Jaffray wanted to bid. And that's the one thing that we have, uh, chosen to do by advice of Bond Counsel, was to say, no, they're separate to be our financial advisor and do everything in our favor. Because you, you know, you can see the conflict of interest, the risk of being checked out, so we just, that was their, e- especially with the QSCB a ye- uh, a couple of years ago, and it was federal dollars being reimbursed, it's just ripe for an audit. So that was their recommendation, our Bond Counsel will say, no, make things separate. So they are truly just working for us.
That's the way it should be.
Yes.
But there are certain, um, brokerage companies and banks that specialize in governmental entities like that would be more favorable, that's what all your information on the state of the city and the state of the district is, is what's used to get a rating to get what we will be sold for.
Yep.
Sometimes mutual fund companies and anyone looking for an, an investment, they can sell other people, but usually individuals don't buy these big of. Right.
I'll learn, I think they're in five thousand dollar units, so individuals could get involved, so, but through a broker.
Well, only retired John Deere employees could actually.
I just wonder if Michael was gonna submit his bid. That might be a conflict.
Well, Michael, thank you for answering the questions, and you answered all, all the questions I had with going through. Um, just one other point to make, when, uh, um, on the finance committee, when the auditor was here, um, Dennis Meiskin's from, um, Holman Hansen, we asked about, I think Bernice and Shannon were there, we asked about kind of where our district stood in terms of other districts that he'd seen, and in terms of borrowing and debt, um, and it was, you know, just an off-the cuff answer that he gave, but he felt very comfortable where we were, especially in comparison to other districts with the amount of.
So you'd expect me to get a respect of our rating?
Probably because of that, too, that it's not, as I asked, are we mortgaged, you know, so to speak, more than other places, and he said, I think he said, we were less, we were far less than most, yeah. Yeah, some were over a hundred percent. He said, we're, we're far, far below that, I don't know how you, well, I think you, you can do that, you just pay a much higher rate, but, um, no, I, I felt more comfortable. Yes, yes, yes. Any further questions?
And Mike, I just wanna add on the facility side, the three of us, that this is, these things and these projects we're talking about have been on our radar screen for a at lea- and I've only been on the committee nine months, and they've been on there, some of this air conditioning and some of this fencing, this is not just stuff that we came up with, it's, it's been there, it's been ongoing, and I really do think we've been really diligent at pruning out the stuff that's not necessary, and I think this is pretty bare bones, but I think it's really important stuff.
Yes, no, that's a very good point, and, and some of the, the discussions have been on demolition as well, from, from some of the school buildings.
And that's what I wanted to bring up a little bit, and what we talked about in finance was too, that the district still does have, uh, uh, overall plan that we are going to take responsibility for the schools and the neighborhoods that, um, have old buildings, and we are not, it is not the goal of the district to leave those and disrepair in your neighborhoods for a longer period of time than we can get out. And I just wanna give that assurance of this board and our, our, you know, administration that we are working towards removing those buildings.
And that, yeah, I, I think that was a commitment from really when it started with the one cent sales tax, was that buildings would be, everyone would try in good faith to reuse the buildings and find a use for them, but those that couldn't, um, if a certain time period elapsed, and there wasn't a good use for them, and didn't seem to be in the future that they'd be demolished, would be torn down, so.
And there is an academic dimen- I mean, it's, it's the building demolition that we've all agreed with, so that's, uh, it's the safety that is more and more, becoming more and more of a, so we wanna do what we can there. But then the third, and you mentioned the air conditioning, I mean, it does set us up now that all our elementaries and all our middle schools, uh, with a couple of projects here, will be air conditioned, so, so you can plan your classes, I mean, i- if you're not, first of all, the students are gonna be in a more comfortable environment, but beyond that, you don't have to worry about hot days and early outs and, and all that sort of thing, so you can actually plan the curriculum and the activities. Academic, academics begins to, to become, uh, more reliably executed, so I, I think there is a, uh, maybe a small, but there's an academic dimension to this as well.
And Michael, thank you for the information, that answers all my questions.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for all the work you and your staff did to put this together.
You're welcome. And I did find out about the crack-up farm.
What is it?
It is where we buy eggs for the high school culinary.
Cool.
Andrea, that's what, yeah.
Hey, I grew up on a farm, I had, that had to be that.
Well, thank you, thank you for that as well, but no, thank you for all the information here. Any further discussion? Okay, if not, all those favor, in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, um, that's my fault, we'll do a roll call vote on this, um, this is whether you're in favor of the motion, and I'll start with it. Shannon McNally?
Aye.
Sue Flynn?
Aye.
Bernice Richard?
Aye.
Andrea Sparks?
Aye.
Michael Kinsey?
Aye.
And, and Lyle Schmidt?
Aye.
And, uh, Mike Young votes aye as well, so motion carried. All right, the last action item on our agenda is Exhibit A, this is the second reading of a, um, a board policy in there. Um, this was up for first reading at our last meeting two weeks ago, this is regarding policy maintenance dissemination review, basically. This is regarding policy maintenance dissemination review, basically school district policies. There were some changes made regarding the fact that our board policies are available online. But those who cannot review those policies online can contact the board secretary. And Sharon Miller, who has chaired our board, our policy committee, policy review committee and handled that.
Oh, this is one of my favorite policies. It is exciting, a policy on policies.
About policies, yes.
It's, it's kind of fitting that it might be one of the last ones that I bring to you. So I think the changes are pretty obvious for the benefit of access. So I've been happy to answer any questions.
And the board policies are available on the district website and basically searchable.
Yes, they're in a searchable database. So if you just type in a keyword, I do that all the time. I don't remember exactly what the numbers are, but it pulls it right up and anything that actually mentions it. So they're very, very easy to access.
Yeah, it, it's much more helpful than just even having it in a PDF format and just put everything online. The fact that they're searchable is great.
But, and Sharon, for the people that don't have technology, don't want to have technology, they still can get a hard copy?
Absolutely, absolutely. Either call the board secretary, that's one of the contact points, or myself. And we'll be happy to give them whatever they are interested in.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
We discussed at cabinet today whether, as a general policy, would we allow policies on policies to be brought before the cabinet if it was a third-tier policy? We didn't, we didn't come up with any conclusion.
I will warn you, in the next month or so, you're going to see quite a few as we're trying to get everything wrapped up in the coming months and hand them off in good shape.
Cheer with Shannon Lee, said, is there a funnel?
There is a funnel. That's right.
There's a regular rotation so that all policies are reviewed every.
Every five years, five years. And so we also have a, a few that are in the wings. We'll be bringing them to you.
And policies can be reviewed more than that.
Absolutely. Sometimes you see them very frequently.
This is, Sharon's heard me say this before, this is the first district in all these years I've worked at that had a regular rotation that eliminated boards having to, about every five years, go through like a two-week thing where.
Just a marathon.
Just incredible. So, I mean, Sharon has, because of her diligence, has just kept them, thank you, Sharon.
Well, you are most welcome. It's, it serves you and the community well that you have a system like this. So I was just pleased to be a part of that.
Yeah, well, thank you for your work on this. All right, we'll get the, the motion on the table. The recommended motion is that the board approve the following policy, policy maintenance dissemination and review, which is policy number two, two eighteen point zero.
So moved.
Thank you, in a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion or questions? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. And that concludes the action items on our agenda. Next, we'll hear from Dr. Norris.
Well, we are a competitive society and the way you grow any kind of programs is through competition. And you saw it tonight. And the biggest thing we heard three or four years ago from different school districts that as we were looking at academies, as we were looking at putting more careers in the high schools, is that if you could have this type of competition, you saw the young people tonight, there'd be more excitement about getting into those programs. And, and so thank you all for, I want to congratulate East and West, but thank you all for saying that it's important that we ought to look at the, the money for, for the competition. It's been a long winter and I think the whole district is ready for a, a spring break. But we wish everybody that's leaving town, Jane and Willie and I'll be here and Bev and whatever we can do to help you out, we're going to be around. And I just wanted to say, Mike is, Mike and I are taking a team of people Thursday down to the Capitol. We're doing something for a first time. Since the subject of the, the biggest chunk of legislation this year is teacher leadership and compensation, we're going to take some teacher leaders with us, some of the same people that have been meeting with Jason Glass and Linda Fandle. So we're taking about, we're taking an academy facilitator, a lead teacher and a literacy coach. We're taking them with us Thursday. We're taking Mr. Coughlin and Crystal Buzza, who's been active with our parent group, our parent advocacy group. And so we're going to talk to our legislators on Wednesday about the, or Thursday, about the importance of allowable growth and the importance of, of our ed reform, et cetera, so. And Mike is tenacious when he gets down to the Capitol. I just want, he is amazing, so.
Focus.
Focus.
Thank you, Dr. Norris. And next we'll hear from individual board members. Start with.
You go.
Lyle.
With Lyle Schmidt? Thank you. And Mike Kinsey.
Nothing at this time.
Andrea Sparks.
Well, let's see, a couple of weeks ago, I went to the East High, I think it was the swing show, yes. And it was very enjoyable, really, and there was the clogger again, really good. Different, different clogging music than what you usually see, you know, on some of those channels on TV. It was very good, the whole thing was.
Thank you, Andrea. And Bernice Richard.
Oh, I also want to congratulate East and West. And piggyback on what Dr. Norris said. It's amazing to see what is happening in our schools and in our classrooms. And then they carry it over. And that's why I raised a question about funding, because this is so important in our district when we have these academies and when we have extracurricular activities and we have speech and drama. And, and I know the students are responsible for some of the funding and they should be. But still, we should be sponsoring more in those areas, especially in competition areas.
Thank you, Bernice. And Sue Flynn.
I just want to thank all the parents that participated in conferences last week and just playing an active role in your students' lives and being supportive of their teachers and of their activities. And I just think that how we excite our kids is to get them involved in extracurricular activities. And so I want to thank parents that run kids back and forth and back and forth because that's a real, real important part of growing up and a part of education that you learn from that. And I just wanted to comment, the young gentleman from West High that's running for an office, he came to my place of employment in his suit and tie and had a letter asking for donations. So that's an education in itself, learning how to professionally prevent yourself, go to a business and, and represent your school well. And I just applaud the efforts of all the coaches and sponsors and people in the extracurricular programs because it doesn't pay well, but it's a big, important part of these kids' lives.
Thank you, Sue. And Shannon McNally.
Have a safe and happy spring break.
Thank you. And I just had a couple of quick things. One, I wanted to congratulate Gabe Evans, I actually met him today, he was at Rotary and Tony Dell's his teacher. And he is going to the National Forensic League National Tournament in Birmingham this summer. So it's just one more thing. We had so many good students, they all, from East and West, make us very, very proud. They're all very impressive. And then on a sad note, our condolences on behalf of all of us to the family of Willie Gadson, who passed away. And I don't know if services have been scheduled yet. I don't think I saw anything today, but we'll, we'll watch that in the courier. But our condolences go out to, to Mr. Gadson. Did a lot of great work for young people from, very young, all the way up and coached in college as well. But did, did a lot of work at West, or excuse me, at East High. So our condolences are with, with his family. With that, everybody have a great spring break. Our next meeting is in two weeks here on March 25th, the Monday right after spring break at 6:00 PM. Is, if there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
In a second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Adjourn, thank you all.